Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Pennington County Planning Commission meeting of February 12th, 2024. Recommendations to the Planning Commission on certain items from the agenda will be considered by the Board of Commissioners at their regular meeting on February 20th, 2024 at 10:30. I try to tell everybody that is the time for planning items. It doesn't mean any specific item will come up at 10:30. That's when they start those items. The Planning Commission utilizes speaker request forms, which are available in the commission chambers during the meeting. If you're an applicant or an applicant representative, you don't have to fill out one of those forms. Roll call. Kevin got ahold of me and he's in a meeting this morning. He will be here later, probably after the 9:30 point. So that's everybody then, isn't it? Good.
There's some treats over there.
Has everyone had a chance to review the meeting minutes from the January 22nd, 2024 minutes that are included in the agenda packet? If you have, Chair would address a motion to approve.
No move.
Is there a move in second to approve the January 22nd, 2024 minutes of the Planning Commission discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Same goes for the agenda. The agenda as published should be in your packet. You should have had a chance to review it since it's been published. Chair would address a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved?
Second.
Moved in second to approve the agenda as submitted for the February 12th, 2024 meeting of the Planning Commission. Discussion. Hearing none? Oh, excuse me, opposed. Discussion. Okay, some more cough medicine, please. Anyway, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you for bearing with me. Approval of the consent agenda. Go ahead, Jason.
Morning Commissioners, Jason Thonison, Assistant Planning Director. Following items have been placed on the consent agenda for action to be taken on all items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda by any Planning Commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration. The findings of this planning commission on certain items from this agenda are recommendations to the Pennington County Board of Commissioners who will make the final decision. Agenda item number four is conditional use permit review 21-46 for Jeff Devaney to review an off-premise sign, and staff recommends approval of conditional use permit review 21-46 with conditions. Agenda item number five is conditional use permit review 22-51 for Patrick and Amy Rose to review an accessory structure prior to a primary structure on the subject property, and staff recommends approval of conditional use permit review 22-51 with conditions. Agenda item number six is conditional use permit review 22-43 for Heike and Jolene Nielsen to review a guest house, and staff recommends approval of conditional use permit review 22-43 with conditions. And lastly, agenda item number seven is minor planned unit development amendment 13-02 for Westlife Holdings LLC to review an existing planned unit development, and staff is also recommending approval of minor planned unit development amendment review 13-02 with conditions.
Thank you, Jason. Does the staff desire to have any item pulled?
No, sir.
Does the commission desire to have any item pulled?
Number six, please.
Number six. Anyone in the audience here to speak on any of these matters that you feel like you want to have this item pulled? All right. Thank you, Jason. We're going to... Motion to approve the agenda, the consent agenda with item number six pulled.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second to approve the consent agenda with item number six pulled. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. On to item number six.
Good morning.
Morning.
Quick question.
If I can find anything on?
This is on the old Hill City Road just up from where I live, and we looked at it yesterday. This is a garage as a guest house in their building up above, and there's supposedly a residence. Now, is the residence the house that's way off?
Yeah.
That long one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right. Because looking at the map and everything here, it didn't make any sense. But if that's what it is, then I have no questions.
Yeah, it's the one, the larger one off to the side.
Yeah, that's it. Okay, thank you. That's it.
Would you care to make an action on the motion?
Yes, I'd make a motion that we accept item number six, which is CUR 22-43. Sorry.
Second.
Moved in second to approve, per staff's recommendation, CUR 22-43. Discussion. From the audience, from the commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number seven. Good morning, Christine.
Good morning. Item number eight.
Oh, yeah. Eight, excuse me. I actually had my thing. Boy.
Does that cough, sir?
That coughs, sir.
Yeah, more cough syrup. Sorry, guys.
Good morning, Christine Phillips.
I thought I came prepared.
That's funny. Christine Phillips, Assistant Planner, agenda item number eight for Patricia Rousch. Conditional use permits you 2341 to allow an accessory dwelling unit on the subject's property. The applicant owner is Patricia Rousch, and she is actually in the audience if you have any questions for her. The location is 9470 Sherwin Lake Road, zoning is suburban residential district. There's no flood hazard on the property. Let's see. Zoning ordinance lists seven criteria that the Planning Commission may consider in the review of a conditional use permit. In Pennington County Planning, Section 324 lists seven criteria that must be met to allow an ADU. These are displayed on the slide. The interim Department of Review had no concerns or objections. The applicant has requested a conditional use permit for an accessory dwelling unit for a vendor to live in. They will be putting in a new onsite wastewater treatment for the ADU. Staff finds no concerns with this conditional use permit and recommends approval of conditional use permit CU 2341 with conditions.
Thank you. Questions for Christine?
Question, simple one. The picture, it shows they're demolishing that barn or whatever it is. Is that where the house, this ADU is going?
You can come up here if you like.
Do you want to be?
Yes, ma'am. You'll have to introduce yourself just for the record.
I'm Patricia Rousch. I'm the primary homeowner. The barn, it will still be a barn. It'll still be a horse barn, but instead of the upstairs being a big hay loft, it'll be a 700 square foot apartment.
And you're going to move it?
I'm sorry.
Are you moving the?
As long as all the egress and setbacks, easements, easement setbacks, and also the septic to the east, we have to beat all of that, but otherwise it'll be essentially in the same place.
Okay. That's my question I had. I had no problem with anything else. Thank you.
Okay, Christine, I guess mine's almost the same thing. In other words, they're not exactly rebuilding the barn?
They're actually tearing that structure down. They have a removal permit for it.
Right.
Because the structure wasn't sound enough.
That's what I thought. I was, I looked at the conditional use permit application and said rebuild the barn, and it looked to me like from the diagrams and the prints we've got, it's an entirely new structure based upon the purpose they, they're following in the conditional use permit. Thank you. Any question, other questions for Christine? Or the applicant? Anyone here to speak on this matter?
It's a lively crowd.
Yeah. I guess I messed everybody up with the cough syrup, huh? Go ahead. Chair, address a motion.
I move we approve CU 23-41.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve CU 23-41, per staff's recommendations, with 14 conditions. Discussion. From the audience, anyone? From the commission? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. On to item number nine.
Agenda item number nine, conditional use permit CU 2402 to allow vacation supplemental on the subject property. The applicant owner is Kathleen Holliday. She is not here, she lives in Nebraska. Location is 230 Matterhorn Drive, zoning is suburban residential. There's no flood hazard on the property. Zoning ordinance lists seven criteria for the Planning Commission, that the Planning Commission may consider their review on conditional use permit applications. They are displayed on the screen. Department of Review had no concerns or objections. Staff performed a site visit on January 10th, 2024. The address is posted on the road, but will need to be put on the residence. We were not able to get up the road because there was a lot of snow. Staff finds no concerns with this conditional use permit and recommends approval of conditional use permit CU 2402 with conditions.
Questions for Christine on this item number nine? Is your applicant here?
No.
No.
She lives in Nebraska.
Okay. Anyone from the audience here to speak on this item? Hearing nothing. Chair will address a motion on item number nine.
I move we approve CU 24-02 with 15 conditions.
Been moved in second to approve, per staff's recommendations, CU 24-02 with 15 conditions. Discussion. From the audience, from the commission? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. On to item number 10.
Megan Talmadge, Planner. Agenda item number 10 is conditional use permit CU 24-03, and it's to allow contractor's equipment storage yard on the subject property. Staff recommends to continue conditional use permit 24-03 to the February 26th, 2024 Planning Commission meeting, as the requested use may expand beyond a contractor's equipment storage yard, and staff's working with the applicant to find out what exactly they're doing on the property.
All right, similar apparently to the questions the commission had on the last contractor's yard.
Yes.
Thank you.
Chair. Move to February 26th, Planning Commission meeting, CU 24-03.
Okay. Moved in second to approve, per staff's recommendations, CU 24-03.
To continue, not to approve, continue?
Continue.
Yes, sir.
I, well, all right. I was just gonna do approve, per staff's recommendations. That was, I understand. Thank you. Staff's recommendation to continue to the Planning Commission meeting of February 26th, Discussion, the only discussion is, I threw you a curve, Steve, with all the cough medicine. You probably figured I was gonna fall off the chair this time.
You and cough medicine. No, I moved and then...
I know. I understand. Thank you.
We need a second.
We need a second. Moved in second to approve, to make staff's recommendation to continue to February 26th, 2024. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, David. On to item 11.
Cody Sack, Environmental Planner. Item 11 is Plan PPL 24-0001. It's to subdivide and create tract A of Thoson subdivision number two. The applicant and landowner is Adrian Ranch LLC, Neil Adrian. Adrian is KTM Design Solutions. I believe that's changed. I don't know what their, their new name is. I believe Janelle's in the audience if there's any questions, though. The location of the property is near 13761 Highway 40. It involves 79.23 acres. The proposed tract A will be 40.36 acres. Current zoning is agriculture district with an existing land use of agriculture. Access is off Thoson Road, and there is no special flood hazard area on the property. Currently, the property is vacant, and there is no onsite wastewater drainage system. Proposed tract A again will be 40.36 acres. The vacant, and vacant many structures. It is zoned agriculture district, so a reason would not be required. This was rather off our Department of Review. The highway department did come back and say any road that was built within or along the section, mine must be built according to 14 standards, and any access must be permitted through Thoson Road, or Thoson Road District. The applicant is proposing to subdivide to create tract A of Thoson subdivision number two. The applicant has applied for subdivision regulation variance, SV 24-01. Document approved Thoson Road according to 14 standards, which we heard at the February 20th, 2024 Board of Commissioners meeting. The applicant did submit a layout plan, which was approved with conditions. One of the conditions was condition number five. They had multiple residences on the property. They either needed to get a conditional use permit for those. They went the route of, they eloquently described those parcels off, so the property is in compliance. Now there is one house on each one of those lots, so condition number five no longer applies. There are some issues with the certificates on the plat, and staff will work with the surveyor on that. Staff finds no issues with applicant's requests. This appears to be in harmony with existing lots in the area, so staff is recommending approval of Plan COPPL 24-01 with conditions.
Thank you, Cody. Questions for Cody?
I have one.
Go ahead.
I've looked at that plat, excuse me, a million times trying to figure it out. If you look at that and then look at the regular one, how does this figure out?
That might be an easier question for Janelle to answer. The lot is coming down like this and taking a portion, taking this northern portion out right here. So this little portion that you see right in here is this guy. So it's almost like they're coming down like this, going like that, and this will be the remain, the rest of it would be the remaining balance of that.
Okay, but put that plat back up, Cody. All right, if you follow on the right side, those angles that are coming down, how does that square with what we show as the overall lot?
This, this map? So this map is what's currently there? So this map would show that it's coming straight down like this, cutting over like this.
Okay, so they still will have that other part?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, it'll just be the remaining balance of whatever this lot is.
Okay, all right. I just, I wasn't sure on that. No, other than that, I have no, no questions.
I only have one. Would you explain condition number five that you were talking about again?
Yeah, so it's kind of hard to see on, on this, on this map. So this used to be all one big, big parcel.
All right.
There's these individual lines in here now.
Sure.
There's a residence here, there's a residence here, and I believe there's one more somewhere else. So they were told to get a conditional use permit for those. They went the route of eloquently describing those off, so each residence is on its own parcel now, which is, which brought the property into compliance, which is what the conditional use permit did. So they just went a different route with it.
Sure.
So that condition was no longer...
All righty. Thank you, Cody. And I see an agent for the applicants here. Anything to add that you'd like to add at this time? Any other questions for Cody? Chair, address a motion.
Make a motion that we approve PPL 24-01.
Second.
Six conditions.
Right, with six conditions. You're right.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second to approve PPL 24-01, per staff's recommendation, with six conditions. Discussion. From the audience, from the commission? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we combine 12 and 13 for discussion in one and vote on them separately.
Second.
There's a second. Moved in second to approve condition, motion that would allow us to discuss 12 and 13 together as one item, and you will be allowed as well to discuss those things. It has to be approved by two-thirds vote, and we will still have to act on each item separately as an agenda item. That being understood, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. You may discuss number 12 and number 13 together.
So item 12 is comprehensive plan amendment COCA 24-0001, and item 13 is rezone, CORZ 24-001. It's to change the future land use from ranchette to rural residential district, and rezone three acres from agriculture district to rural residential district. The applicant and landowner is Charles and Jenny Hansen. They are in the audience if there's any questions. Location of the property is 24025 Trixie Lane, involves three acres. Current zoning district is agriculture. Current future land use is ranchette district, and existing land use is residential. Access is off Trixie Lane, and there's no special flood hazard area on the property. Staff was recommending to continue comprehensive plan amendment and rezone RZ 24-01 to February 26th, 2024 Planning Commission meeting, to allow the applicants time to submit a layout plan application. They did submit a layout plan application, so I guess staff would be looking for direction if you want to hear the rest of it and make a different motion on it, or if you'd still want to continue it to that February 26th Planning Commission meeting.
Questions for Cody on that?
Chairman. Are we both, are we continuing both or just?
No, we have to act on them at one and individual.
Eleven, twelve, right?
Both are recommended to be continued, but staff would look for, staff would go through the staff report if you were, if the Planning Commission was looking at making a motion other than continuation to that meeting.
Is it gonna move, is one gonna move the other faster, or they just still aren't gonna be able to move forward until the 26th anyway?
So they wouldn't be able to move forward until the 26th anyways. They just submitted that layout plan, so they still have to go through the plating process, which at the earliest is about a 60 to 90 day process. So this rezone wouldn't push them back any farther other than they came to the meeting today. So it'd be up to the...
Is the applicant here?
They are, yes.
Maybe we should ask them if they care, because they have to come back on the 26th anyway. Is that okay, Charlie?
Yes. I was going to ask whether the applicant was here. Thank you. Yes, you have to introduce yourself just for the record. Thank you.
Jenny Hansen.
Ms. Jenny, does it, do you mind if we put both of them on the 26th to hear together? Or you'd like one heard today and one heard on the 26th?
What would you recommend? Is there a difference?
I'd say that you, it's easier to comprehend both at the same time anyway, so I would recommend do both of them at the same time on the 26th.
Okay.
Sorry, so Cody Sack, Environmental Planner, both of them would go to the 26th. It would just be if the, if the Planning Commission recommended approval today, that's what would go to the board meeting for approval. If you recommend to continue, it's just gonna get continued at both meetings. But again, staff would probably recommend, probably still continue it, so we have time to actually go through that layout plan. I already have a fairly good idea based off of the exhibit that Davis Engineering submitted, but it'd probably be better to give that a little time just in case something came up.
So I'll move to continue number 11 and number 12 to February 26th.
Second.
Moved in second to continue CA 24-01, per staff's recommendation, to the February 26th, 2024 meeting. Discussion. Just the one item.
Yes, sir.
From the audience, from the commission? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are now on item number 13.
Mr. Chair, I move we continue rezone RZ 24-01 to the February 26th meeting, per staff recommendation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second to approve for staff's, or continue per staff's recommendations, rezone RZ 24-01. Discussion from the audience, from, from the commission? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. On to item number 14.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we discuss 14 and 15 together, but vote on them separately.
It's been motioned. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Moved in second to discuss item number, agenda item number 14 and number 15 together as one. Discussion. It will have to be approved by two-thirds vote, and each item will have to be voted on for action individually. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. You may discuss item number 14 and 15 together.
Cody Sack, Environmental Planner. Item 14 is comprehensive plan amendment COCA 24-0002, and item 15 is rezone CORZ 24-0002. The applicant and landowner is Keystone Ventures, Inc., Andrew Bussie. Location of property is 24035 Highway 16A, involves 26.08 acres. Current zoning, some of it is no zoning, some is commercial and some is highway service. Existing land use is a commercial helicopter tour. Access is off 16A, and there is no special flood hazard area on the property. So future land use currently is the property is commercial. The proposed zoning is highway service. Minimum lot size for commercial and highway service are the same. Maximum density for single-family residents are the same. Setbacks are the same. Land use is the same, and utilities and water is the same. So currently, within a half mile of the property, there is highway service. So this red is highway service. This pink is commercial. This green is, this light green is agriculture. The dark green is open space, and this yellow is rural residential, blue is planning development. So what the applicant is looking at doing is this current lot right here is zoned commercial. He wants, he's currently plating, and he wants to bring it all under highway service district, so he's looking at doing that to highway service. This picture's not the greatest. There's a little, so there's this right-of-way right in here that used to be part of 16A right-of-way that was absorbed into the property. The Department of Transportation vacated that right-of-way and gave the land to Mr. Bussie. So currently doesn't have any zoning on that, so what this will do, what this comprehensive plan will do is give it a future land use, and the rezone will zone that property. So this little area right in here will be highway service as well. This was rather off our Department of Review. There were no objections or concerns that were received. Again, the applicant is proposing to subdivide the property to create three lots, and he wants it all under one highway service zoning. Existing lot roads and infrastructure would support highway service zoning, and it is in harmony with existing zoning, future land uses in the area as well as current uses. So staff is recommending approval of comprehensive plan amendment COCA 24-002, and recommending approval of rezone CORZ 24-0002.
Thank you, Cody. Questions for Cody?
Chairman. So Cody, isn't the direction to change everything in the planning department to commercial instead of highway service?
That, that is the direction we're going, and we're gonna put those out there, but he's in the middle of the plating process, so if we tell him to wait on that and it doesn't change, or it doesn't move forward as fast as we want, he would be in limbo. So if he rezones it and, rezones it now, he'd be able to move forward with his, his plating process.
Is there something in highway service that's different from commercial?
There's some. Highway service currently allows amusement structures. That's the ordinance that you're talking about takes those out and makes it a conditional use permit. But really, there's not a whole lot of difference between highway service and commercial. Um, but really there's not a whole lot of difference between highway service and commercial right now. Um, so he's just looking at rezoning that one portion so it's, he's not dual zoned on one lot. Um, I should have put the plot on here, but, um, if, if you, if that one lot was left commercial, he would have some highway service, some commercial on that lot and it would just be cleaner to have it all as highway service. Um, but in the future, if that zoning ordinance changed, then it would just all be commercial.
So, y'all, do people have to come in then and change that? Or the change of use, if they had a, a amusement park on it, that's when they'd have to do a whole different comprehensive plan?
Yeah, so if, if they currently have an, an amusement structure, and there's only a couple lots that I can think of like that. He has a c- uh, conditional use permit for his, um, his helipad. Excuse me. Um, those structures would be legal non-conforming at that point. So if they ever wanted to expand on it, then they'd have to come in and get a conditional use permit. Um.
Which they would anyway because they have to switch it from.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, they won't, they won't have to like, um, like if you're currently zoned highway service now, you won't have to really do, do much of anything if that, if that's what you're asking.
Right.
You're just.
Unless they change the use, then they'd have to get the conditional use on the.
If that use required a conditional use permit, yep.
Just so people know, or the planning department know we're switching, well, not aye, but the planning department switching some of the zonings and highway service made more sense in commercial with conditional use permits in different areas that were specified in commercial. And it made more sense because a lot of the areas even in the city is low density, medium density, um, commercial.
Yeah.
So, um, just coincides with some of the stuff that they're doing.
Yeah, so I guess to, to clarify what Commissioner Hancock's saying, um, cause, uh, some of the commissioners were not, uh, we do a planning session with them where we talk about our proposed zoning ordinances. Um, we're proposing that highway service and commercial just be combined under one commercial zoning district. Um, so that's what Commissioner Hancock's referring to.
Additional questions for Cody?
I have one. On, on one end of this property is a pretty tall hill and the other end is pretty flat. Where are they gonna put the three lots?
Um, I could go try to find it. It's just, it's basically, they're just rearranging those lot lines.
Yeah.
Um, to create three, three different parcels. So there's gonna be a, a lot down here, a lot here and a lot along the.
Oh, they're, so they're not just gonna be regular?
Yeah, they're not, no, because in order to be highway service, they have to have, um, I believe it's fifty or seventy five feet of frontage to the highway. Um, so there'll be a lot up in the, um, northeast corner, a lot farther over here that has, uh, frontage to the road and then one farther down here.
Okay. All right. Yep. Thank you. That's all I have.
That was kind of my question too. I guess I'm not clear on specifically what property we're looking at pulling out of the comprehensive plan and specifically what property we're talking about rezoning. I can't tell it from your drawing, Cody.
So, um, this, this lot right here?
Yes.
Um, I'll, I'll actually pull up Rapid Map. It'll be easy.
Do they end up filing like a specific plaque or showing the, the lines?
Yeah, and I can, I'll find that plaque and, and show it to you. I should be able to pull it up on here as well. So. Uh, this is gonna be the current zoning. So see how this portion of these properties is, is in zone? So it's, it's this that's gonna get zoned to highway surface. Um, and then this portion, this, this lot right here is currently commercial. That's gonna be included in this. So what we're rezoning and adding to the comprehensive plan is this lot right here. And then this portion where you don't see any color within these blue lines.
All right. But then my next question would be that doesn't, does that total the twenty six acres or?
According to D C Scott who submitted the, um, the meets and mouths in the description for it, that's what they put down for it.
Understood. Then in other words, the entire area up there is greater than the twenty six acre.
Yeah, that, all those lots combined are, are, um, I can't, I don't have the number off the top of my head for.
I had thought so, but I wasn't sure. I just couldn't. Now, when they file that or we approve this, um, is there a way that that's what we're approving to do? You know, in other words, that we're not blanketing something in there that we're missing?
You mean for the comprehensive plan and the rezone?
I don't mean to be, yeah.
Yeah, it would, it's just this portion and this. It's what the legal descriptions that D C Scott submitted.
Your paperwork indicates it's that portion.
Yep, so the, when, if, if this gets approved, when we go through and we change this, it's just gonna be this lot and these portions right in here.
Understood. In other words, it's more defined than what we see here. It's defined in the definition of the legal description in other words.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, cause these, it's, it's weird when you, there's a software that equalization has that we don't necessarily have. These are actually like individual lots within here.
Hmm.
How they're described off, which are part of the legal descriptions of the overall property. Um, so those legal descriptions is what's gonna be.
I'm just being cautious that we're not blanketing something that.
Nope, it's only gonna be, it's only gonna be this portion and, and this.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you. Any other questions for Cody? Your applicant here want to make any comments? Please introduce yourself just for the record.
Hi, I'm Peggy Bussie and, um, I'm with Keystone, Keystone Adventures and, um, thank you for describing what's happening here. Andrew is not in our area today and so to tell you the truth, I really can't answer too many of your questions. Um, but I know that he's been working diligently to try to get this cleaned up because of all of the different little parcels going back and forth with this, um, set of properties. And so, um, please ask the questions as necessary, but I'll probably defer over to him anyway.
Any questions for Peggy? And you understood what, um, Commissioner Hancock was explaining that we are talking, uh, seriously about down the road combining the two districts and, but you're covered under the approach the planning department is doing. Okay. Thank you then Peggy. We don't have any questions. Anyone else here to speak on this matter? Item number fourteen and, or, uh, we combined two, didn't we, fifteen?
Yes.
Yeah, item fourteen or fifteen? Thank you. Chair will address a motion for item number fourteen.
Mister Chair, I move approval of C A twenty four dash oh two.
Second.
Moved in second to approve comprehensive amendment twenty four dash zero two per staff's recommendation. Discussion. From the audience. From the commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. On to item number fifteen.
Mister Chair, I move we approve R Z twenty four dash zero two Keystone Adventures.
Second.
Moved in second to approve per staff's recommendation. Item number, or R Z twenty four dash oh two. Discussion. From the audience. From the commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. On to item number sixteen.
Uh, Cody Sack, environmental planner. Item sixteen is conditional use permits, use twenty three dash thirty two. It's to allow managers residence on the subject property. Uh, the applicant and landowner is Saint Patrick LLC. I believe he's in the audience if there's any questions. Um, just to update, this was continued from the December eleventh, uh, planning commission meeting, uh, to allow the applicants time to bring up, bring the structure up to fire code. Uh, at this time, it's not. I do have Chip in the, um, Chip from the city, uh, fire. And the contractor was working on the, um, sprinkler system here. If there's any questions for them, um. But staff is gonna recommend to deny without prejudice until such time that that structure does meet fire code. Um, so that, I guess that'd be staff's recommendation at this point. If there's any questions, I probably have Chip, um, describe the fire codes and the, um, contractor give the update. They know more than I do at this point.
Here. Cody, are they gonna fire sprinkler? Is that what they're doing?
Yes, and I believe that the residence and the kitchen have been sprinkled. It's just the dining area. Is that quite correct on that?
And, and was it for code, it has to be the whole area?
For the mixed use for, for fire code, yeah. And Chip, Chip's gonna be able to explain that a lot better than I am what's required for fire code. Um, that's why he's here today if there's any questions.
So the dining room isn't sprinkled, the living space is sprinkled.
Mm-hmm.
The, um, the cooking area with the stove and everything is sprinkled.
Correct. It's just the, the entire structure was, I'll let, I'll let Chip talk.
Please introduce yourself just for the record. We'll direct questions to you, sir.
Good morning. Chip Premus, Division Chief, Fire and Life Safety. Uh, work for Rep City Fire Department and we have a good team working with the county too. Um, unique things like this. Uh, it's a retrofit, the sprinkler system. The residential portion is, is done. Uh, the kitchen hood system is a different system, but it's, that's done too. And we're working on with the contractor. Retrofit takes, it's not an easy process and there's the planning part of it, making sure everything works and, and then getting the supplies and then installing it. We are, they, they are working on that. I know the contractor very well and, um, Doyle also and we're, we're making progress. So it just takes a longer time to do a retrofit sprinkler system on a structure like this. But we do have, the biggest concern done is that's the resident downstairs. Uh, that's sprinkled right now. That's working, so the life safety issue there is, is, is gone, so. Any questions?
Questions for you?
Chair.
Yes.
So to retrofit the structure, does it have to be and make it legal? Um, does it have to be all sprinkled like in the, um, dining area and everything?
That's correct. So when they're done, the, the building will be fully fire sprinkled, dining area, kitchen area. And then of course the downstairs is already done.
And that's the only thing holding this up?
That's the only thing. It's just taking, it takes a while to get this pro- this process done, but they are working on it and it will be done.
Yes, it does. Ask Rich. He just did our motel. So it does take a while. Um.
So, so I, I guess I, I guess you, if I, if you guys could move forward with this, I mean, there's, this is a, it's gonna get done and, you know, just give us a little more time on that, however, if we do that, Cody.
So what's the process, Cody, from if they're moving forward, do they, they can't get a building pa- permit or what, what's the deal of trying to move forward?
So Cody Sack, environmental planner, uh, for people who aren't aware of the situation, basically what happened was they came in a couple of years ago to get a permit to, uh, convert a deck into like an enclosed area. Um, and then a, a bottom area for storage. That storage area turned into a manager's residence. Uh, so they got, they didn't get a building permit for that. They need a C E P to move forward. Um, staff recommended denial. We don't think it meets our ordinance for a manager's residence. Uh, the planning commissioned, um, directed us to move forward with conditions because it seemed like they wanted to approve it. Uh, but one of the things was that the structure had to meet fire code. So that structure hasn't met fire code, so we've been continuing the item. And usually when we continue it so long, um, eventually if it's not done, we recommend, uh, to deny without prejudice until that, whatever we're requesting is done. So you'll just keep continuing the item. Um, so it's basically a continuation. They'd have to come back and, uh, reapply for, and pay advertisement fees. But if the planning commission doesn't want to deny it without prejudice and they want to, um, continue it out for another month or however long the contractor thinks it's gonna take, that the planning commission can do that as well.
Oh, Chair, is there a contractor here to tell us what, how long this is gonna be?
Before Chip sits down, I have a question for Chip. Would that be all right? I assume then that it's going to be zoned. Is, we have some, in other words, we have a zone done, we don't have this zone done. Is that what I'm looking at?
Yes. So we got the, the residential side done and Rich Broderick's here to explain that part two, but yes, it's working in steps. It's just getting the pipe up, stairs to get that area done. It's just, it's challenging.
Oh, yeah. Lots of surprises and changes of conditions, I'm sure.
Yes.
One more question for Chip. Do you usually approve stuff before all of the fire sprinklers done? I mean, do you guys, you guys have to come in and approve that it's sprinkled, it's done right?
Yes.
And sign off for a building permit? Do you usually sign off before the sprinkler systems are done?
Uh, sometimes we're, we're a little flexible with, with, uh, with business owners, the owners and stuff, cause we don't go, it's black and white because it's the business owner. We want to keep the business open. And we want, you know, the use open and we don't want to affect that. When we know and we communicate back and forth that things are being done and then we work with that. So yes, but I will, I will approve what Rich has done out there just to help the county out, cause we have a few more resources, so. Did I answer that? I don't know.
Yes, Chip. So, so Cody, um, at this point, um, is it, is the fire sprinkling in the main area done except for the dining room, you said? And have you worked before with the fire department or there's, are there people like Rich that did the sprinkler systems? Um, do you make them? It's code to have them all done before or you can improve it, especially on a business that's already been opened?
So u- usually, uh, sorry, Cody Sack, environmental planner, um, usually like our, our experience with working with the fire department and, um, like sprinkler systems are new structures where they're permitting, where the, the building permit would be approved based off of their plans for that. However, this is already done. They've been living in there, um, without a building permit. They were told that they're still in violation and they can't be living in there. They're still living in there. So they're, they're still operating like they have been. It was just the direction of the planning commission when we continued it was that the structure meet fire code and the structure doesn't meet fire code until the whole structure sprinkled. So if the planning commission wants to change that, that motion and direct, we can continue it for two weeks and put, because they're fine with the sprinkler system just being in the living area for now. Um, but then there's really no, um, uh, policing moving forward on if that actually gets done in the dining room.
Bottom line is they're living in a space they're not supposed to be living in.
So we want, yeah, so we want to see it done before we give them approval to actually live there. Since the, since they're doing it with, they did it without permission. They didn't get a permit for us. They told it was just storage. They converted it to living space. We feel like it, the structure should meet fire code before they can apply for their building permit and get something. A conditional use permit is basically a special request.
So how are you getting a building permit if you felt that they shouldn't be living there? So because we approved it.
We gave them a building permit for s- to convert a deck to like, to basically a area that they could use for the restaurant and a storage area downstairs.
I got that, Cody, but now, so they can't get a building permit no matter what, cause now they have a living space and you said you denied the living space, but they're living down in the space. So how are you moving forward even?
They have to, they have to get their conditional use permit to be able to apply for the building permit for that lower space. The planning commission, the planning commission, when they continued the item so that they continued it to allow the applicant to come into compliance with, for the structure for fire code. So that's what staff goes by. We can't just say, oh, part of your structure meets fire code, part of your structure doesn't. Now, if the planning commission wants to change that now and continue it for two weeks and approve it and say that they're fine with just the, being sprinkled down here for now, that'd be a decision that the planning commission can make, but that's not a decision staff can make.
Mister Chair, can I add to that?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, just so you're aware, the fire code permits this type of use all over the country. When you have, you know, I know it's a little different with the county ordinance and the city ordinance are different. But this type of use is permitted, you know, in the fire code and in the building code. You can have a residential, it's called mixed use and where that comes in is then the whole structure has to be fire sprinkled.
Right.
And just so you are aware also, the way this, this building is mi- the, the upstairs restaurant is on a slab. And it sticks out, I don't know, how many feet? Eight, fifteen feet? Well, and then the residents are down, down below. That area is, is sprinkled and it's got some. That area i- is is sprinkled and it's got some separation in there per building code. Um, I guess if we could get this continued, tell we keep working on this instead of having the applicant. Because we're working on, you know, I promise you where this is gonna be done and just so you're aware, we have other means through the fire code. If this wouldn't get done, we could do other things, so as far as taking away uses and doing things like that. But they are working on that, we've never had to go that route, you know, in his, the history I have because the the people are working with us. So if we can continue that, is that the easiest way until we get this done? But I don't, you know, if we deny it, then it costs a much more work for the applicant and, you know, and we're still gonna be doing what we're doing.
Chip, denying without prejudice means they keep working and then they come back when they're done. So if they deny without prejudice, it means you can take six months if you want and just come back and or if it's gonna be done in two weeks, do we just continue it for a month? But um, you guys have been listening to a lot of this more than I have, so.
Just open the door too, I have a question before you go.
Go ahead. No, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I have a question for Chip too afterwards.
You're fine Charlie, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, are the current smoke alarms and those sort of things, the normal construction things in place in the building?
You know, I haven't been in the living quarters, but I'm sure they are. There wasn't anything required then, but you know, the 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 what does the sprinkler system in the living quarters is done, so.
It doesn't matter anymore.
I'm not worried about smoke detectors because the, you know, the the sprinklers.
Goes up, not down, huh?
Yes, so that's correct.
Well, I, that's, I mean, that's nature, it's gonna go up, it's not gonna down, not that it can't eventually, but I'm seeing at the time. Thank you. Any other questions for Chip before?
So with the two areas, the living quarters and the kitchen area that are the two really major protected areas. We're pretty good until the rest of the stuff discontinuing the way that things are right now. I mean, we've got life safety issues, we've got sprinklers in the residence, which is on a lower level. And the kitchen, which is where the fires would start.
Yeah, it's kitchen hood system.
So all of that stuff is already in place, it's just a room like this that doesn't have anybody in it.
Yeah, it's it's the dining area and then some kitchen areas and storage areas, but and this Rich Broderick here.
Rich Broderick, I represent Hydraulic Solutions Fire Protection, the contractor that was hired by Mr. Estes to retrofit this facility. And I have a degree in fire science. Chip replaced me when I retired at the fire department, uh been doing this a long time. You're exactly right Commissioner Johnson, that how this, how this particular structure is laid out, it's difficult to get down to those residents. If we're talking about, I guess that would be what you guys' decision is, are are we talking about a life safety issue here? Or are we talking about the structure? Because that's two different things. That's why right away when Mr. Estes called, we went out the next day and started working on that residence just to get that part taken care of, the residence. And then I went up stairs obviously throughout this process and figured out that there was an ansel system, which is just a a a model of a kitchen hood extinguishment system.
Correct.
And then, you know, it depends on occupancy loads and so forth with the old, it'd be manual fire protection, a pull station and some smoke detectors, which there aren't any, and you eliminate them in most restaurants just because of the area, the the smoke and so forth and. Um, I I it it, these are difficult because it's not like the city where we have designated water flows and so forth to be able to just to access that information and get it. Number two, getting engineers to help us along the way to sign off on this stuff is difficult. As frustrated as you guys are, Mr. Estes is with me just because of the time that this takes to do this. But we have an engineer on board, uh water, uh there's a water district out there in High Seega that's been helping us get some water flows and so forth, so we're gonna come up with a a tank and pump and use the existing water and and combine them into one system that'll meet Chip's recommendations and and or approval on this. So it's, I would say that it's gonna take us forty-five, at least forty-five days, forty-five to sixty days to get this all complete.
So are they they operating the restaurant and stuff now?
They are, they are, and then at night it's empty.
So it's not gonna stop the restaurant or do anything like that, right?
Nope.
So we can deny without prejudice and in two months you can come back and then just reapply once you've got it done. Are you okay with that? Is that your building, Mr. Estes?
Other not, I'm sure.
Please introduce yourself just for the record.
Doyle Estes, the applicant.
The Doyle, sorry sir, um it's gonna take him a couple of months to um get the building sprinkled. You okay with denying without prejudice and come back when he's done?
I I don't know if that predic- what predicament I would be in by denying without prejudice, would that mean they would have to move out of the lower level in that period of time?
Cody Sacramento Planner, technically when they received the violation letter that they were living in there without a conditional use permit, they should have moved out. Um, I guess I don't, they're not technically supposed to be there, thank you.
Would it make it any easier?
Even if it was continued for the, if we continued it for two months, they still shouldn't be living there.
I would ask the matter be continued for sixty days and Mr. Broderick said we can have it done by then.
That's, that that'd be a planning commission's decision, like I said. Usually when we continue an item, this has been going on since October of twenty twenty-three, so actually September of twenty twenty-three, I believe. So once we continue an item for so long, if it hasn't been done, we usually recommend to deny without prejudice until it gets done. But if the planning commission is comfortable continuing out for sixty days to the first meeting of April or the second meeting of April, uh the planning commission could do that.
So Cody, they have people living in the basement, but the planning depart- planning commission said it was good?
The planning commission never said it was good. Uh, the 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 planning commission, so we recommend to deny because we don't believe that the ordinance for a manager's residence states that it can be actually in the structure. Uh, it seemed at the meeting in October, um I I don't have the date on that, but the meeting in October, that the planning commission was willing to consider conditions. They were willing to approve it, but we didn't have the conditions, so we continued it um to allow staff time to get conditions in and for the structure to become up to fire code.
Okay, so it's a unique situation, planning department at, or planning commission decided that, okay, we're not gonna call a living space, I don't know what you guys called it, but you left the residence in there to be nice. And now, um, we're saying still, we don't want them to move out, we're okay with them moving in there or being there, but we need to fire sprinkler upstairs, so everybody okay with that? I'm, because the fire department and I trust hydraulic solutions, plus I've known Rich a long time and and his fire sprinkling, just take my word for it for our buildings, he does an amazing job. Um, for me, it's the safety of the residents, the safety of the people in there. Um, and it looks like at this point there is safety and most of the time I'll just tell you, we don't, we don't do that. But I think um you've been, you made an exception that um some people needed you to make that exception, so. Um, for me, um, I should say this up, but I'm okay with that. I mean, sometimes there's no way to around it to do it the right way in a way, except for kicking people out. And at that point, you guys made an exception to um have people that run the restaurant basically and cook at that restaurant and have that restaurant to keep moving forward. So for me at this time, I think it's okay if we just um continue it for two months, that's me personally, and move forward.
Thank you. Chair is convinced that we can move forward with some confidence here, go ahead Chip.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Chip Premus, Division Chief Fire and Life Safety. Just to rest assured that, so you guys, your comfort level, this building where they're where they're sleeping, it's fire sprinkled, there's a doorway getting right outside there, it's not a huge area. I feel a hundred percent confident, like, you know, that that they're they're safe sleeping in there. I know, you know, like I said before, there's, we have to live in a gray area sometimes because we don't want to displace people. Um, you know, especially with housing the way it is around town anyways, but, you know, yes, it's not by the word of what the county ordinance is. But, you know, just to to give you guys some assurance that the fire department and we we feel comfortable that, you know, that they're gonna be safe sleeping in that area, so that's all I have.
Mr. Brown, I have a question for you. Assuming that we did um propose um an extension of where we're at. Um, the ansel system or Halon system, is that still fully functional and operational as it's in place?
Correct, Rich Broderick here with Hydraulic Solutions Fire Protection again. Yeah, the ansel system would stay in place the entire time as, also the residential protection downstairs uh will stay, w- w- there'll never be a night where there's not protection on the kitchen hood unless something catastrophic happens.
In other words, it can be activated for their protection? And then finally, how, have you noticed since you're a contractor, are there proper fire extinguishers and and things in place? I assume there is.
Yeah, it's super clean too, I've been in almost every kitchen in the city, Rapid City and most of the county and it's a super clean facility and.
You were hearing me.
I yeah, I wouldn't have any trouble if. It it's a, it's a, it's a unique situation, you just run across them sometimes. And if it's life safety that we're worried about, that's what it is, the life safety part is really covered. It's just now we're protecting the structure, you know, part of economics, just so that the structure can stay in business for a long term. Because I think they're thriving out there, they were in the city, this particular restaurant, and now they're out there and they're thriving. Every time I go there, it's good, so I'd like to see it continue myself.
Thank you. Any other questions for the contractor? Chair would like to know that in the past, working with the planning department, um we haven't had a problem with continuances as long as the specific date was set. Um, that's been the direction from your director in the past, that we don't, what they do not like is that when we continue something without a specific date, meeting date to return this, so.
I'll make a motion to continue till April twenty-second, which is a couple of months from now.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second to continue this item to April twenty-second, at which time we will discuss it, a discussion. Um, I think we've gotta throw in some of the things that we just discussed. That one is that uh the uh system for the apartment or whatever you wanna call it, living quarters is activated. Number two, that the other system stays uh operational and that there's appropriate fire extinguishers and that sort of thing. I wanna uh forward that, those items in there, I think they ought to be in there in our motion if that was all right with you.
Chair, um I think um if Rich and Chip said that that is functioning, has the fire extinguishers, he has to look at those fire extinguishers, so.
Sure.
Um, I'll just tell you if you have the commissioner or the life safety for the fire department, one that was life safety, he's not gonna tell it's fully functioning and I don't think we need him as conditions, you can put him in there Charlie.
I see what you're saying.
If if these two guys weren't.
Yeah, what is fully functioning? I agree, okay, I'm just saying that we're, we're trying to provide the safety for those people that are staying there. And the other thing is, is I think there has to be some assumption that the operation of this business is going to continue on until that time.
Yeah, because most have to have the fire alarms before you even get a building permit or a fire, um what do you call them? Smoke detectors, you have to have the um, make sure the extinguishers are working. Um, Rich checks all that, even on ours, he has to go through all our buildings and stuff to make sure. So if he's telling you that it's functioning and it will be functioning until he sprinklers, then um, like I said, he's life safety and so is Chip. They're not just firemen walking around and and making sure that there's a couple of things, they do that for a living. So I trust that, um if if the, if you wanna put them as conditions, Charlie, it's fine.
No, I understand what you're saying about fully functional, that gets out there, starts getting into almost liability situations. I agree, that's like the word complete. Um, Cody, you wanna weigh in on this?
Um, I I don't think you'd have to add conditions, I think if you put in there to continue to verify that it, the structure meets fire code, I think that's all you'd really need to.
Okay.
I agree.
Thanks Cody.
That'd be my motion, or is it already in there?
Second.
Moved in second to continue, item number CU twenty-three dash thirty-two.
Thank you.
Uh, to the April twenty-second meeting of planning commission, discussion from the audience, from the commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Mr. Chair, point of order, I ask for your opinion on combining agenda items number seventeen, eighteen, nineteen and twenty for purposes of discussion, but we would vote on them separately, if you will.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Point of order is that we would like to combine four items instead of our normal two. In the past, the planning commission has combined two items and that's been our modus operandi for the whole thing. But we would like to combine the four in this case uh for that. And the only question I would have, is that going to create any difficulty with you?
No, it wouldn't.
All right. Based on that, that Chair would go ahead and accept a motion to include the four together.
I would still move that.
Second.
Moved in second to include item number seventeen, eighteen, nineteen and twenty for discussion purposes together. That will take a two-thirds vote and we will still have to vote on each item as an individual agenda item. That understood? Everybody figure out what we're doing, are we up to speed? Okay, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, you can include.
Who's second in that motion?
Excuse me?
Who's second in that motion?
Uh, Kevin. All right, you can discuss um your item seventeen, eighteen, nineteen and twenty together.
Megan Talmadge Planner, agenda item number seventeen is Vacation of Platt VP twenty-four dash oh one. It's to vacate a portion of Platted Rightofway along Chapel Drive. Agenda item number eighteen is Vacation of Platt VP twenty-four dash oh two and is to vacate the Roadname Chapel Drive from the Platt. Um, agenda under, agenda number nineteen is Comprehensive Plan CA twenty-four dash oh three and it's to establish the future land use of a rightofway with no zone will soon to be vacated rightofway with no zone to rural residential. And agenda item number twenty is Rezone RZ twenty-four dash oh three and it's to rezone a vacated rightofway with no zone to rural residential district. To vacate a, the applicant is Pectola Heights LLC, um the agent is Ben Fosland, their surveyor is Davis Engineering. Um, this is currently located within Pectola Heights subdivision shown above and it's only for the um affected portion shown on the screen. Uh, the access is from Highway three eighty-five. Chapel Drive will not be fully improved to ordinance fourteen standards due to topographical reasons. They could have gotten um a variance, but even then the road would be, would have been pretty um steep and not very safe, so they chose to vacate it instead. Um, lots fifteen, sixteen and seventeen will be acquiring this rightofway. Um, the comprehensive plan and rezone. It will, the proposed future land use and um zoning is rural residential. Um, currently if it's brought into those three parcels, it wouldn't meet the minimum lot size, but lot fifteen, sixteen and seventeen will be combined through the plating process into a lot that's greater than three acres that will meet that zoning and future land use. Um, staff recommends approval on all of these items, a couple of them do have conditions, but are there any questions?
Most of this is for cleaning up what we've discussed in the past on this particular parcel, is that not correct?
Um, that's actually the comprehensive plan and rezone that will be heard after this. This is a new request and it's specifically just for this portion of rightofway that they're looking at vacating.
Okay, when we say that there was a loop, in fact, you've got the picture up there right now. What, will they then, um, since the road is already, I think, to fourteen standards, isn't it? Do I remember that?
Um, except for the portion that needs to be vacated.
Okay. Will they uh then have to do a? Will they uh, then have to do a cul-de-sac or something per highway's design recommendations?
Yes, they'll have two turnarounds on either one and one is a cul-de-sac and one is a hammerhead.
Okay. Very good. So those issues have already been addressed and they're comfortable with that. Um. Our requirements on that are highway department requirement.
Highway co- or highway department really had no comment on it other than they um, have no comment because it's not in a section line and it's um.
Sure.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Megan. Any other questions for Megan? The applicant's here, I know that. And you want to add anything or introduce yourself and?
Wouldn't.
I guess my question would be so that you know that, that um, you've already addressed then the issues of the cul-de-sac and the hammerhead.
Yep, Ben Fosland uh, with Pectola Heights. Um, yeah, we have been working uh, with Megan on this and Lyndon uh, is also here. Um. My partner, part of the ownership group and he uh, the road is actually done. And so he went ahead and got it completed. Um, and we put in the cul-de-sac and the hammerhead as, as directed.
Super. Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you. Chair address a motion and we would be dealing with item number eighteen?
Seventeen.
Seventeen.
Seventeen, yes. Sorry, I flipped my pen over here. Seventeen.
I move we approve VP twenty-four dash zero one per staff recommendation.
Second.
Moved in second to approve per staff's recommendation. VP twenty-four dash zero one with two conditions. Discussion. From the audience. From the commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Now we're on to item number eighteen. If you care to address that action on that.
I move we approve VP twenty-four dash zero two per staff recommendation with one condition.
Second.
Moved in second to approve per staff's recommendation with one condition, VP twenty-four dash zero two. Discussion from the audience. From the commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. On to item number nineteen.
I make a motion that we pass Comprehensive Plan Amendment CA twenty-four dash oh three.
Second.
Moved in second to approve Comprehensive Plan Amendment CA twenty-four dash oh three per staff's recommendation. Discussion from the audience. From the commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. On to item number twenty.
I move, I move to approve RZ twenty-four zero three.
Second.
Moved in second to approve RZ twenty-four dash zero three per staff's recommendation. Discussion. From the audience. From the commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. We are now off the combined items. You're on item number twenty-one.
Agenda item number twenty-one is Preliminary Plan PPL twenty-four dash oh two and it's to reconfigure lot lines on Pectola Heights subdivision. The applicant is Pectola Heights LLC, then agent Ben Fosland. Surveyor is Davis Engineering. Uh, this is located within Pectola Heights subdivision over by the corner of forty-four and three eighty-five. There are, there is no special flood hazard on the property. Um. The applicant is requesting to consolidate twenty lots into seven lots and uh, Pectola Heights subdivision has a total of twenty-eight lots, including a well lot. Um, the road has been improved to ordinance fourteen standards up to the portion being vacated. And uh, it's in the process of forming their own road district. The paperwork has been filed with the auditor's office. Uh, they've submitted rezone, or they've resubmitted rezone RZ twenty-three dash sixteen and Comprehensive Plan Amendment CA twenty-three dash eleven to rezone any lots remaining under three acres to low-density residential. And on that note, there are no lots in the subdivision that will be less than one acre. Um. There are still a handful of changes that need to be made to the Platts such as Chapel Court. Um, the cul-de-sac on the southern end does need to meet a fifty-five foot radius rather than the fifty that it's currently at. Um. And the parcel line table will need more lengths on it. But that has been provided. Otherwise, staff recommends approval of um, preliminary plan with seven conditions.
Thank you, Megan. Questions for Megan?
I do. Do you have that, the picture of the plat?
Yeah.
I sat in my easy chair the other night and started doodling, trying to figure out what was what on these com- combining revised and everything. Plus you've got the other ones out against three eighty-five.
Yep.
Trying to figure what is what by using uh, the next uh, agenda. It, it didn't seem to make a whole lot of sense. Let's put it that way. And I understand what you're doing in the revised and the eight and they're there, but the other ones are kind of.
Yep, so the, the only lots along Highway three eighty-five that are actually being replatted is that lot eighteen revised.
Right.
Because it's having more right-of-way dedicated to it. Otherwise, the remaining lots on that side adjacent to three eighty-five are remaining unchanged.
Okay, well, the number, like I say, I tried to put a number to those lots and it didn't seem to come up with the right number from the next agenda. That's all I was, I'm curious about that. I have no problem with the eight revised. They, they do come out, but uh.
Is it because lot thirteen revised is also being rezoned now, I believe? Um, so lot thirteen and fourteen will not meet that three acres, so that one needed to be rezoned also. Um, and that, those are the lots that are, one has the well light lot on it and then it's the adjacent one to that.
Okay. Okay. All right. Uh, on these eight, I have no problem.
Thank you, Michael. And I noticed that in this submission, we do have a uh, a new drawing from Davis Engineering from the twenty-fourth that does give us a better example of what they're proposing. The applicant's proposing to do. Did everyone pick up on that? Good. Any other questions for Megan? For the applicant? Chair address a motion.
Make a motion that we accept preliminary plan PPL twenty-four oh two with seven recommendations.
Second.
Moved in second to approve PPL twenty-four dash oh two per staff's recommendation with seven conditions. Discussion from the audience. From the commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. On to item number twenty-two.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we combine twenty-two and twenty-three for purposes of discussion, but vote on them separately.
Second.
Moved in second to combine items twenty, agenda items twenty-two and twenty-three together for discussion purposes. Uh, the usual applies to this. Two-thirds must vote individually. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. You may discuss twenty-two and twenty-three together.
Agenda item number twenty-two is a comprehensive plan amendment to change the future land use from rural residential district to low-density residential district. And agenda item number twenty-three is a rezone to change the zoning from rural residential district to low-density residential district. Um, this li- this item was last heard at the December fifth, twenty twenty-three Board of Commissioners meeting, where it was denied without prejudice. Um, since then, the applicant has submitted a preliminary plan and and is requesting that any lots that remain under that three acres required for uh, rural residential be rezoned to low-density residential. Um, staff recommends approval on both these items as the um, roads have now been improved to ordinance fourteen standards.
Chair.
Go ahead.
Megan, you've done a lot of work on this.
Yeah.
Uh, thank you for your time and everything you've done and then Ben and Lyndon, you followed through. So um, there is a process and sometimes that's not so great and it is slow, but you've followed through with everything. Megan has worked with you on and we appreciate that. Like I said, sometimes that process is a little bit different, but it also understanding um, the bottom line, uh, where we're coming from for comprehensive plans and all that. And that's a lot. I don't care if you're a developer or a builder, it's still a lot. So Megan, thank you for helping them through the process. And again, Ben and Lyndon, appreciate you guys following through because we denied you without prejudice because we figured you would follow through. So thank you for doing that and I'm glad this is all going through at this time because it does take a lot of work from both sides, our side and yours. So, thank you.
The only thing I had, Megan, was that on, it isn't shown in here, but I know that based upon their engineer's drawing, uh, seventeen and eighteen would have that little, uh, the dog leg for the turnaround.
Yes, um, the rezone and comp plan from twenty twenty-four will have that in there since they're switching the zoning and future land use to do different things. It had to be two applications.
I just noted it wasn't in the, you've got the other one uh, deal up in here and you've got the turnaround down there. I just noticed that that little dog leg was. Does that, that splits those two lots, I think, based upon his new. Yes, splits the lot line on that, changes it a little. But I know that they're doing it based upon this uh, drawing from Davis Engineering, so. Just wanted to note that for the record that on this particular one, it wasn't put in there, the little dog leg up on the top. You know where I'm talking about there?
Oh, yes, that's um, the, that's the proposed change from the preliminary plan. So if they go through with their final plat, that will be the final.
That'll be on there.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions for Megan? Chair address a motion on agenda item number twenty-two.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve CA twenty-three dash eleven.
Second.
Moved in second to approve Comprehensive Plan Amendment twenty-three dash one-one per staff's recommendation. Discussion from the audience. From the commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. On to item number twenty-three.
I make a motion that uh, we pass the rezoning RZ twenty-three sixteen with no conditions.
Second.
Moved in second to approve per staff's recommendation, RZ twenty-three dash one-six per staff's recommendation. Discussion from the audience. From the commission.
I just want to thank the applicant for getting all this done. When you first came to us, it was even hard to comprehend, but you've, you and Megan have done a bang-up job on getting it done, so thank you.
Thank you, Megan, for all your help.
Go ahead.
Uh, Lyndon Bolt, Pectola Heights Development Company. I want to personally thank all of the good South Dakota people here that we get the privilege to work with, with our county commissioners, planning department. Megan, all of the people that have helped us with this. Uh, thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Amen. Thank you, Lyndon. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. On to item number twenty-four.
Morning again, Commissioners. Jason Blenson, Assistant Planning Director. Agenda item twenty-four is County Board Report and the Board of Commissioners concurred with the Planning Commission's recommendations from the January twenty-second, twenty twenty-four Planning Commission meeting.
Chair. So we also had a, a planning department, um. What did we call it?
The workshop.
Works, work session. So that was kind of nice just to be updated by the planning department. So on VHRs and um, some of the changes on the like highway service. What else did we talk about, Jason? Um, Hard Rock Mining, Alexis did, Alexa did a lot of work on that just to update us. What else did we talk about, Jase?
Uh, we're also looking to change the zoning designations from suburban residential, just more or less renaming those to SRD one and then urban residential would become SRD two. Uh, it's more or less the way that it's received by the public, calling it urban residential in the county. Um, so.
The commercial part is good because now it will just be all commercial and then if they need something in commercial. Like I said, it makes it easier not to have something different than the city and then try to figure out what's the difference between highway service and commercial. That way, um, you're right, CUP is conditional use permits um, in those commercial districts that, you know, we don't have usually or that are unusual is get to move forward on. So I agreed with a lot of the stuff that's going on with um, the planning department. And again, you guys work pretty hard at trying to figure out where the problems are at and where um, is best to change. And some things, you don't have enough stuff to change on there to make a change. Uh, so I appreciated that as well because making it difficult and making more stuff for people to go through, it's not what we want to do. We want to simplify it to a certain extent, but also health, safety, and welfare has to be considered. So this planning department or planning commission has done well. You guys, I like this planning commission as well because you ask a lot of questions. And even if we make you mad up on the, the, the plant, the uh, commission, I still appreciate you because you know what? You have a passion for what you do and you don't have to like everything we do. So um, appreciate everything you guys do for us. Takes a lot of work.
Just a few more things from that working session too. So we're looking at bringing back planned unit developments as a zoning district just for the mixed-use development that we're seeing throughout the county. Uh, we feel that there is a need for that. Uh, there will be some pretty strict criteria that it needs to meet so it doesn't go back to the way that it used to be where it was a negotiated zoning district, more or less used for uh, getting around setbacks and things like that for residential districts. So we will have some strict criteria for that moving forward. Um, another thing uh, we're looking at doing is removing and getting rid of planned unit development overlay districts. Because those are more or less just multiple use permits. So we're looking to establish that under conditional use permits in the zoning ordinance as well. And as far as zoning districts go also, we're looking at bringing forward a neighborhood commercial zoning district to allow strip malls, sorts of structures, banks, things like that, under two thousand square feet that serve more or less the neighborhoods that they're located next to.
And I thought, I forgot we do a neighborhood commercial, which makes sense because you have Rapid Valley and those areas that are getting some huge development and all you're going to have is housing. Those neighborhood commercials are going to be huge trying to put those on Twilight in different areas where you're, there's only a certain amount of space. And uh, you're not going to be able to fit those setbacks and stuff on regular commercials. So that that was pretty smart, just looking at the future of what's happening, not only in Rapid Valley, but different areas in the county. So. Good job, Jason and your team.
So the bottom line is there's going to be a lot of zoning ordinance amendments coming forward for you guys to review.
Jason, I only had one thing that I didn't throw in at their meeting. I've always thought of planned unit development, PUDs, I think of housing. I think there should be almost this, a CDD, you know, Commercial Development District. Because those two items don't necessarily coincide when people come in here and try to put, put them together. PUD doesn't, I don't think, fit commercial all the time.
Right, so we thought the residential zoning districts should be in the appropriate zoning districts and meet the setbacks that are established in the zoning ordinance. It shouldn't be able to be negotiated in residential areas uh, between the applicant and the board as to what the setbacks are. Um. Example is Hart Ranch. You know, they have a lot of zoning district or a lot of PUD zoning districts where they have allowed lesser setback distances where in all reality, it could have been zoned in appropriate zoning district and they could have met those rather than coming in and negotiating with the board. So.
Just always in my mind, it seems like we, we can't put them under one umbrella, but we do. Since you're going to bring it back, I'm wondering whether it shouldn't be looked at, at least discussed.
Sure.
To divide the two from each other.
Yep, once we have that drafted up, we'll put that in front of you guys.
Any other questions on that from Jason?
That's funny you said that, Charlie, because I asked Jason about PCDs, which is Plan Commercial Developments instead of PUDs. So they'll have to explain the difference on some of those, and he did a little bit today, but makes sense.
Well, we're on to, we lost all our public again.
Yep, no public.
We just have that ability with the public, don't we? You guys usually get people to stay. Items from staff.
So we have the building permit report. You guys should, I will have a copy of that in your packets. Just comparing from last year to this year, we're up slightly for single-family residences and mobile homes. Down slightly for garages and carports. Other than that, everything else seems to be tracking pretty much the same as last year.
Thank you. Any questions for Jason on that? On to items from the membership. Thank you for putting up with me. I'm usually a little numb, but I'm a little more numb than normal today, so.
I talked to Alexa before the meeting, that House Bill eleven forty-nine, the vacation home rental, has gone down, so that would have pretty much taken away counties and municipalities' ability to, to do anything beyond health and wellness and safety and those sorts of things for vacation home rentals, so.
Yeah, it was sent to the last day of the session, or the last, the day after the last day of the session, forty-one.
So it could come back, but.
Yeah. It was voted down, or voted to put it to the forty-first day by about fifty percent, you know, so it was kind of some of the same things that we've had, too, you know, we had this side and that side, that pro and con on it. A number of the committee members are from areas that just really don't have, have vacation short-term rental stuff, and their feeling on it is that, you know, if this doesn't affect us, we don't want to take power away from the local governmental entities. And they had, I don't know if you're familiar with the bill, yeah, there was like five issues that, I said that local governmental entities couldn't say you can't have short-term rentals. But they had like five things that the county, or the city or the county could do, whether it's health and welfare, parking, septic, and those types of things. Just minimal things that, that the city could, that the city, or that would be involved in, that they could do any of those, and then they can still do some of their other inspection type things, too, so.
The city.
I'm sure it'll probably come back again in another year or something, well, because it's, you know, the, you see the different areas that deal with a lot, so.
The city had an ordinance, I don't remember if it's ten sixty-one, Jason or Alexa, did you know? And then they ended up shutting it down, so they never did do anything with it either, so they had a lot of different things like we did, and they wouldn't, they just shut it down, and I don't know what they're doing at this point besides leaving them in the city. Jason, do you know any of that information with the city or Alexa?
As far as the Rapid City goes, I know they don't regulate it. I believe it did go to their city council, and they had no appetite to adopt any kind of ordinance to regulate them, so at this point, they just.
Didn't adopt it.
They don't allow them, and they don't not allow them.
Right. They had a huge ordinance thing that they went through. I saw pages were even big, it was bigger than ours was, and council said no, so they didn't even bring it through.
Right.
Thank you. Any other items from the membership? Chair address a motion to adjourn.
Some moved.
Second?
Second.
Moved in second to adjourn. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.